...value for every dollar invested by the city of Fairhope. The debt balance, this is a very, very important chart because what this shows is a real good picture of what's happened over the past several years. This represents a loan refinanced for about $8.93 million in 2010. It did include about $250,000 of some T-hanger debt. And you can tell that nothing was done and no debt was retired either. That was because the way the financing was structured was that there were no principal payments built in. It was interest only. I think we can go back and always second guess ourselves and ask, was that a good idea? Maybe, maybe not, but nobody could have forecast what happened back here in 2007 when this money was originally borrowed and refinanced in 2010. Was that the Great Recession hit in 2008? And you see us coming out of the Great Recession in 2012. And if you looked at what's happened in just the past four years, there's been significant debt reduction. There's been well over a million and a half dollars in debt reduction that will be projected through 2017. If you look at our outstanding debt, it's gone from 8.9. It spans right now at about 7.4. That's right, that's 7.45 is right there. We're projecting another couple hundred thousand dollars in debt reduction. So it's really, really important to notice when it said that there hasn't been a sense of urgency. This shows that now the airport authority is right in the meat of what's going on right here. Focus on this because there is, it looks like for the past four years, there has been a sense of urgency. In fact, 20% of the debt has been retired in the past five years, including a 14% reduction in the debt in just the last three years alone. I would submit to you that that's a pretty good trend. Potential future cost of the city of Fairhope. Now, I do want to make the disclaimer, these are projections. These do not include any principal paid from any land sales, which whether this land remained in the authority's hands or whether it remained in the city's hands, there's, you know, a sense of urgency to reduce the debt. The first number is if the city refinanced this on a 20-year schedule using an interest rate of 2.15%, the total payments made would be a little over $9 million. And Joe, I think this was around $475,000 a year. Is that what I recall that number was? So that's the annual pay.
That'd be a level amortization.
Right. Okay, so the next one shows that if they, city refinanced the debt, the 7.45 million at 2.15% with a balloon payment after year seven, the payments would be, and it's, it runs from about 380 to 360 roughly, 360 per year. But at the end, you have the balloon payment. So ultimately, once again, not including any land that would be paid down, it would be about 8.2 million dollars total.
Or any reimbursement from the FAA?
A reimbursement for land from the FAA. And so hopefully, all those numbers would be lower. This is speculation as if the airport authority was to remain. This number and this number is the same. This is seven-year financing with a balloon payment at year eight. The city, it would cost the city this amount, which is that roughly, on average, $320,000 a year. It does vary from year to year. It steps down for seven years. But at the end of seven years, it is conceivable that the Fairhope Airport Authority would be able to stand on their own two feet. So the total amount of money put out by the city of Fairhope would be about 2.1, almost 2.2 million dollars. So like I said, there is some speculation in there. And this number in itself also does not include any land sales. None of these include any land sales. It might accelerate any of that. The 2007 land purchase, McGowan tracks have been discussed a lot. I wanted to clarify all that for everyone. There were 258 acres purchased. It was refinanced in 2010 for 8.935 million, which included approximately $250,000 that is not part of the land sale. This is track one. This is on the west side. Track two, about 15 acres. By the way, the Fairhope Aviation School sits right about where that red dot is, right in there, on track two, parcel two. Parcel three, almost 21 acres. Parcel four is 26 and a half. Parcel five is about 56 acres. And parcel five, I want to point out, and I'll get to this in a minute, is where all of the FAA grant money has been recently focused. This is where all the east side construction is going on, ramps, taxiways, aprons, a road cutting off of Highway 13. All of that is going on on this track five right here. Track six, right here, about 62 and a half acres, would be the most prime land probably in Baldwin County for an aviation business to relocate. So do we have a plan? Yes, we do. Council members and mayor, I believe that Joe gave you a bifold, trifold flyer of the Fairhope Airport Authority. This is something new. This has been out for maybe three months, three or four months. They have a new website. They have been aggressively marketing this along with the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance to attract businesses to the airport. Their plan does align with Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization's resolutions to meet the demands associated with the growth of aviation-related industries in Baldwin County. The west side development plan is to develop an Alabama advantage site, acres into premier commercial site. Now, Alabama advantage site, it is designated an advantage site and it is shovel-ready, meaning that we are free to recruit commercial tenants. And that is exactly what the plan is. Talks have begun to find commercial realtors to market the site. Also on the west side, I pointed out the wetlands earlier. We wish to continue to develop Wetlands Mitigation Bank on that side. That land was purchased, to keep things kind of round numbers, all of the land was purchased for about $30,000 an acre. We have sold to date about 5.3 acres, a 10,000 acre for $53,000. Doesn't sound like a lot, but you really can't market that wetlands as being able to be developed commercially. We also sold about 9.4 acres to High Grade Valve on the west side at a price of, correct if I'm wrong, roughly $28,000, $28,000 an acre.
In 2014.
In 2014. We have been in talks with companies that are interested in putting a roadway through there, but we have to see how that impacts the master plan. The Airport Capital Improvement Plan, known as an AIP, calls for construction of an east side general aviation terminal, fuel farm, taxiways, and aprons by 2015. That is on track to be completed, and we'll get to that detail in just a slide or two. Once completed, the airport authority will seek private investors to build additional corporate hangars on the east side and recruit aviation-related businesses. Currently, there's already commitments for $2.4 million worth of capital improvements from private industry. Once again, and the master plan is to become totally self-reliant in seven years. Just step back a moment. There was a strategic planning overview given to the council in 2013, and we're just slightly behind the curve on that. We're not very much behind the curve. Some of that was due to the slowdown in getting some of the FAA grant money. Thought some of that would be completed by 2016, and that's going to be completed by 2018. I also want to point out that a couple of years ago, when we renegotiated the lease with Continental Motors for the FBO and other items, and we also entered into some agreements for private hangars, our rent increased to such a degree that the city of Fairhope reduced the amount of money given to the Fairhope Airport Authority for operations. They had been given $60,000 annually, and they reduced that to $20,000 annually. Once again, this is just a master land use plan. These lots are kind of drawn in, obviously 11. This is where, once again, the academy sits, so all of that cannot be a commercial site. Could be school-related. These parcels are subject to change. These are some of the wetlands in there. But this is the area that there will be the next big push to sell. This is the east side improvements, once again. You see taxiways and you see aprons and ramps here taking you to these. I'm going to show you a little bit better picture of this. It doesn't look exactly like this, but just to give you an idea of the land that's encompassed. That's track five, and this is track six right here. Plans for the west side, there's just a little bit more detail. The west side, as I said earlier, is a shovel-ready advantage site. So plans have already been drawn up to divide that into commercial lots. And if somebody came to us and wanted to combine a couple of lots, though, I'm sure that we would entertain that thought. These lots are not as desirable as the east side, as they do not have airport frontage or runway frontage. Plans for the east side. This is the construction that is currently underway. This is the north end of the runway, Highway 32, private property. These would be hangar spaces. This would be a new FBO facility or thing-based operator. This would be a new fuel farm, and these would be large-size private hangars. You can store other aircraft in these hangars. This is where you start making the money on the leases. People start renting space to put their planes there in these covered facilities. And then also, you can get land leases for these private hangars. And there's been a little bit of tweaking at the airport authority meeting just a couple of days ago. There was talk of maybe moving some of this or some of this other stuff up into this area. And there is just a little bit of tweaking going on. But the over $3 million worth of improvements that you see going on on the east side is all of this right here. And just to give you an idea, this is a very large area of land. This is not like 100 feet. These are hundreds of feet. It's a very large project. How many dump loads of dirt? They bring in?
90 truckloads of dirt per day for about 100 days.
90 truckloads a day for 100?
200,000 to be charged with dirt, field dirt being brought in.
And drainage improvements?
Drainage improvements.
Sure. Right. And the only thing left that would need to be done on this side after this phase or after this round of funding is that it will need one more top coat. Will that be concrete or asphalt?
It'll be asphalt. If we put two inches down now, we'll get an additional four. About six inches.
Six inches. Okay. Thank you, Joe. So once again, I've touched on some of these already key enhancements and designations made to the airport property physically years 2010 to 2016. The enhancements and designations were to position airport authority to attract business customers and digest land acquired in 2007. Once again, we all regret the Great Recession, but we have to live with it. The Fairhope Industrial Park was designated an Alabama advantage shovel-ready site for available for commercial development. It has 75 contiguous acres for development with 110 acres overall. They're already designated a secondary supplier site for Airbus, also foreign trade zone eligible under the Foreign Trade Zone Alternative Site Management Program. I mentioned this a couple of times already, a Wetlands Mitigation Bank has been developed, and we could sell Wetlands credits right now in half. We try to pursue people looking for those credits all over the state of Alabama. In addition, we have the academy, the Aviation Academy at the Fairhope Airport, which offers courses in aviation, industrial maintenance, and welding. It's a $2.7 million facility and annually trains over 100 high school students and college students, also working-age adults looking to pursue aviation and aerospace careers. Economic impacts. If you look at the economic impact analysis based just on employment, this is reference Price Waterhouse Cooper initiates trickle-down effective businesses and service providers. The fringe per new employee income of $43,000. The total economic output per new employee is $146,000. So if you look at the total economic output of just three companies located on or at the airport or near the airport, the Executive Aviation Group with six employees has a total economic output of $878,400. Continental Motors with 26 employees, the total economic output of $3.8 million. Phil Strongberg with Continental's here. Bill, how many employees are you adding in the near future, if you can share that with us?
Yeah, so 26 today, and by the end of February, we'll be up to around 40.
Okay.
We're bringing an operation that's at Mobile Downtown Airport. It's called Southern Avionics. We'll bring that over here in the middle of February, and our growth plans require us to add a few more people on top of that.
So 14 more out of 26 is a little bit greater than half of that, so you're looking at about $2 million more of total economic output. That's by the end of February. The picture I'm trying to paint here is that it's more than just talking about the debt and selling the land. It's about what this means to the community. Much, much of this economic output comes back to the city of Fairhope. I'm not going to sit there and stretch and say that all of it does, but it does have a huge impact on our economy. Seagulls Aerospace right here with 110 employees, a total economic output of $16.1 million. Okay, so why the airport authority and why, what's the question mean? Why should it remain in the hands of the airport authority as to go back to the city? Look, as council president, I wear a city hat and I wear an airport authority hat, and I have to look at what's best for the city first and foremost. And so I'm just going to go ahead and get to the punchline is that the reasons that I think that it makes more sense to stay in the airport authority's hands are you have a single point of contact with dealing with industry. True, you could have a single point of contact with the city of Fairhope, but the airport authority is a group of professionals that are working for no salary, and it's an all-star team. Many of them have aviation-related experience. You have pilots, you have aircraft owners, you have people that are out there at the airport. They know what's needed, and the presentation I tried to get prior just is trying to show what has transpired over the past six or seven years. We are about to enter a transition period, whereas in the next three years, Airbus suppliers want to make location decisions on where to build plants. Once again, a proven team of aviation business professionals. The authority is ready to go without a learning curve. They understand the airport. They know what's going on. And I know you can make the argument, well, nothing's going to happen to the airport authority. Well, go down to number four. The airport authority is not political. The airport authority has shown the ability to make tough decisions without regard to politics, i.e. building the Aviation Academy, limiting Navy touch and goes. The authority has a consistent mission, not subject to political intrigue, and every economic developer, worker, and soul will tell you that it makes more sense to leave it in the authority's hands. The airport authority, the airport is not just an asset for Fairhope, but as far as the entire eastern shore. The airport authority promotes business and the economy on the entire eastern shore. Liability. This is a big one, council. Number five, airport authority cannot be sued for negligence, and accidents do happen at airports. Deaths sometimes happen at airports. It happens. We don't ever want it to happen at our airport, but it could. Airport authorities can also borrow money for up to 40 years. A city of Fairhope cannot, should we get into some kind of financial crisis. And lastly, the airport authority is run like a business and is profitable. Our authority has been profitable for the past two years. In 2015 and 16, the airport authority got a net profit from continuing operations excluding FAA construction grants, city of Fairhope appropriations, and debt service. The main driver of authority's increase, as I mentioned a little while ago, was profitability. Has been a 7% annual increase or a 37% increase to $200,000 in revenues in just the last four years. During this time, the authority's operating expenses have remained relatively constant. Any questions, council? I know I ran through that very quickly. Any at all? Any for Joe? Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate you all listening and...
Let me, I'm sorry. I do have a question.
Sure.
Even if the property was maintained by the airport authority, does the city still have any active role or say-so in what happens to the property?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's why you always have a council liaison at the table. I've been at the table for the past four years. Prior to me, Dan Santowski was the council representative, and I'm not sure who was on there prior to him, but the city has always had a voice at the table and always will. And always will have input in the say of the airport. Absolutely.
I have a question.
Sure.
How many of y'all, besides Jack, knew how much we were paying for the airport? And did you know that we didn't own the land before I brought it up?
I do.
Well, none of the citizens did. And I think at the very least, we have to be transparent. This is a huge debt. It makes up 21% of our overall debt, and the citizens didn't even know that we were paying for it. Who does this benefit? I don't know, because I don't have any actual studies, and this information has not been given to me, but I suspect that it benefits mostly people who own airplanes or jets. And as far as the return on investment you're talking about, it's the return on investment for the airport authority, not the city of Fairhope. And that needs to be distinguished because it is the city of Fairhope that is paying this. We own zero assets out there, and I'm fine not having the liability, but I'm not fine without being a key person in the efforts that go on at the airport. I've only been in here, you know, in office a few months, but, you know, you can deny it all you want. I have been excluded from the table, and I'm the one that said this is the absolute priority for me. Now, if we keep the land in the airport authority, which nobody can give me a reason why, I mean, I think your presentation's great, it still does not answer why that land that doesn't have to be part of the airport authority, you know, needs to be given back to the city. But I think we need to make the board, then citizens that don't have airplanes and that want to get that land developed so it's paid off. And if you keep that board, then there needs to be an advisory board just for that land because you can say that you've done a lot in the last few years, and that's fine, but overall, not much has happened. And I'm only saying this for the citizens, and I think y'all could agree with that, that this is a huge debt. An appropriation, just so you know, we have been paying over $430,000 a year for the last four years as an appropriation to an airport that is for private use. Okay? We give our schools, all five public schools, around $300,000 to $350,000. We are elected to make decisions, prioritize our spending in the best interest of the citizens. I agree, this will be an asset one day, okay? But I think there needs to be an outside audit. There needs to be, to make sure that we, the operations is done with best practices because it's not about the land. It's about the fact that the airport owes us a lot of money, and I don't even know how it's being operated right now. Until that is paid off, I care. The citizens care.
Well, you know, the return on investment, and you're right, mayor, all that is going into the airport, but the purpose of demonstrating or illustrating all of that investment was saying that it has taken up to this amount of time. An airport is a very long-term investment. It's like buying a home. And, you know, we did have a Great Recession, and now all of that return on investment that's gone back into the airport just in the last few years is paying off huge dividends. Now you're right in the middle of where they're getting to where they can finally start seeing a return to, on all of those investments that have been made, and all of those improvements that have been made.
I agree with you, and all I said is, if we're going to report, we need to report in a transparent way. That return on investment so far is not for the city of Fairhope. The city of Fairhope is paying. We have no assets, no return.
It was improvements in the airport that are positioning the airport to be able to market that land. You can't market the unimproved land, and now that it's being, now that the millions of dollars have been poured into it, now that land is being positioned, as the last four years show, to be marketable. Also, you can't ignore the fact of all that economic, total economic output. I just put three companies up there. I didn't even talk about the fringe of the fly-ins or the sales tax resumes or the lodging revenues. We didn't even begin to touch on some of the fringe things.
What does that income go to?
It comes straight back to the city of Fairhope.
That goes to the airport authority?
No.
The gas?
Sales taxes when people fly into that. Sales taxes and the lodging taxes, and all of that comes straight to the city of Fairhope.
I'll talk about the gas.
The economic, the Price Waterhouse study is impact on the economy in the surrounding areas. I mean, just, you know, we're the mother fire. So those jobs that are created out there, 160 of them, that economic impact is on Fairhope and eastern shore. Now, not, not...
I think bottom line, I brought this up. I brought it to the forefront. I'm glad that it's lit a fire and it's become a priority for the airport authority, and if that's the very least I accomplished, you're welcome.
I don't think you accomplished it because I think the fire was already, the fire was already lit. There was always the incentive to, there was always an incentive to market that. There was always incentive to get off the city's nickel. And the city of Fairhope has always been at the, the...
You'll be...
City of Fairhope has always been at the table discussing this, and as somebody who helped reduce city debt, $16 million in four years, nobody's looking after the service of the debt.
The citizens didn't do what you're paying.
I know the citizens, the citizens, the citizens. You know, we...
That's all I work, that's the only thing I work for.
Does the council have any more questions?
I just wanted to point out at least that regardless of which direction we're going to move forward, we had a 25 basis point interest rate increase. If that were to translate to the offers we got when we were looking at refinancing the debt, that would cost us, if that does translate equally, it's going to be $99,000 over the next seven years that we're going to be paying increased interest. So regardless of whether we keep it in the airport authority or keep it in the city, like time is of the essence.
That's why discussion and decision is on the agenda tonight to make a decision. We took this off to have this discussion well over a month. Joe had been talking to the city of Fairhope for probably two years, looking at when the best time to refinance was. It was on everybody's radar, and the time is now. So, you know, I leave it in your hands. We can discuss it. I think we need to discuss if it's going to remain in the airport authority's hands, how much would be appropriated. I would think it should be less than what's been appropriated. I'm going to throw out a number, but this won't, it can't be voted on, but I'm going to throw out a number for debate, as I think we need to appropriate about $310,000 a year. I think it needs to be a long-term commitment to get better financing. I think we need to keep it in the hands of them for all the reasons stated in the presentation and move on.
I have one question. If we appropriate for 350, by leaving it with the authority, or we take the land over, which we take the $7.4 million debt, which will equate to roughly $600,000 in payments a year?
That's if you go, well, it depends on how many years you finance it for. I showed a 20-year schedule, and it was about $475,000 a year. I ran a 15-year schedule, and it was $575,000.
Well, my point is, it's less money for the city to let the airport authority have it, which to me is a better business decision based on that alone.
That's why...
Not including the economic growth that has occurred from the airport and it's brought in from the city and everything else. It's just, it's less money the city has to pay. It's going to pay, and when I look at these things, it's going to pay A or B, and if B's higher than A, I want to stick with A.
Well, my main point was, was that nobody knew about it.
Again, that, that can be fixed, remedied.
Well, I know, I mean, it was fixed, and it has to be a priority.
You speak as if it was hidden purposely, mayor. It was, nothing was ever hidden. They have a public meetings. They always meet in public. They, the city council, and they know what the appropriation is to the airport authority. They voted on it in the budget. Every year, the budget's published online. You, you know, because you're saying people didn't know, I don't even think they gave it a second thought. They, they didn't know what we were giving them. They know how many, how much money we're giving to the library every year. I think people are happy going throughout their day-to-day, and it's not a big concern to them because they trust the city leaders to run it to the best of their ability.
I can promise you, people, when they find out how much we're appropriating, they are concerned.
Again, it's less money than we had.
I know, right now, we are getting to a point where it's going to be paid down more. I want it to be a lot quicker than 10 years. In 10 years, we've paid down, yes, we've paid down some, not enough. And we can't come in, they say they have a plan, and sell off a small portion of property when, if there isn't a big plan, that property could be sold off for more. I mean, there has to be a vision.
And we welcome all that, all those inputs. Everybody, that 100% is welcomed. All the help that we can get, all the help that we can get to do that. But...
Jack, to me, the airport authority is, and like you said, the library, it serves, grants you a small... It serves, grants you a smaller population of people, because not everybody has a plane. But it is within the city. So whether the city has ownership or the Airport Authority, to me, is what, and you say you replace the people on the board, well, people serve on the board because they have an interest in whatever it is, whether it's a home building board or a paint board or, so, to me, it makes sense who's on the board. Now, in the long run, if it makes sense to leave it in the Airport Authority, that's, you know, that's my thought.
Well, the other issue, all of that boards and authorities represent what I call singular groups that benefit, or certain people in the community, the recreation board. Obviously, we've got a lot of kids in town, but basically, the recreation board doesn't benefit the senior adults at all. Golf course, I don't play golf. So whoever doesn't play golf, that means we're not supposed to fund the golf course? We don't play, not everybody plays golf.
But these people also, they're, they're making decisions, you know, to, okay, this, this lease is worth 24 cents a square foot. I mean, you know, when we have people on a board that, I don't know how it's being operated right now, but until I'm comfortable with, you know, that the way it's being run is in a profitable way to pay down this debt, I wanna know more. I mean, I think you can agree with that.
I do, but the information's there for you to know. It's not like it's being hidden from you, it's there.
And it's, if the financials have never been, we've never had an outside audit on those.
Well, that doesn't mean because we don't have an outside audit, you can't go and find out what's going on. You can still find out what's going on. The information is there. Is there ready available for you or anybody else that would like to look at it? It's all public.
I just, I don't understand what all the defense is on this. This is very good that we're talking about it. It's very good that we're making decisions to move forward and make this a priority. And, you know.
Well, it's not defense, it's giving me an opinion.
I have not, I have not done anything wrong at all. I think people appreciate the fact that I've made this a big deal.
Mayor, nobody's saying you did anything wrong. It's certainly not a defensive side. It merely might be the other side of the coin from what you think, but it's certainly not defensive. And that's how we communicate our thoughts, is what we're talking about. They may not agree with you, but they're still our thoughts, and they're not, certainly not defensive.
They're still not, out of all of this, no one can say why they would have a problem with putting the land in the city's, and that just, that will never be able to.
I just gave four or five slides just to watch.
No, that's Airport Authority, that's not.
I'm gonna get on to each one of you, because we were supposed to get recognized before we speak.
I'm sorry.
And I've been sitting here raising my hand like a good pupil here, and guilty? But, but I'd like to say, I mean, if I'm being recognized.
Yes.
That, I mean, if it is possible for us to limit the city's liability, which is always a pro, if we can reduce the amount of cost to the city, which I think is a benefit also, and keeping it in the Airport Authority's hands allows us to do that, then obviously, that sounds like a good idea. But I do think that there needs to be, and it sounds like you're saying there is, there does need to be a partnership between the city and the authority.
There is and has always been. I mean, it's been totally intertwined from day one. It's, it's never been separate. Mayor, you know, if you need to be called up for more speed, you know, meet with Joe. Sure, he'll give you anything that he wants. I mean, you've been in office for six weeks, and I mean, we can't expect you to.
I've been talking about this since September, beginning of September.
Not in a, not in a, in a council meeting.
I don't have to be in a council meeting to talk about the airport. I've definitely made this a priority to get to the bottom of it and figure out what is best for the city.
You say get to the bottom of it like there's a conspiracy. Get to the bottom of it, and audit it, just the threatening language that you use, that we need to audit the finances, and I need my own outside team, need my own outside team to come in and make sure that what they're doing is right. I hear it over and over and over. It's your theme of everything, it's, it's everything's wrong. You got, you got private citizens running around City Hall, asking our employees questions over and over and over and over and over. We don't even know who they are. We don't even know who they are. Mayor, we don't even know who they are.
And the financial lobbying we're doing wrong. I told you that already.
Let's move on. All right, anybody have a figure they wanna put on that, if we were to put this on the agenda?
Have a figure?
Yeah, how much you would like to appropriate if we do. If we vote on an annual appropriation, I recommend an annual appropriation. I'll throw a number out there. 310.
What's our normal, what's our normal appropriation?
It was 420?
We did 428 last year.
Was that for debt servicing or was that total?
That was, that was, that was total, 408 for debt service for, you know.
20 for operations and 408 was debt service.
No operating subsidy, just straight debt service, we have to negotiate, that's the only thing we can do.
That's, that's, this is, this is us cutting it by 120 total. 3, 430 to 310.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a point, right now, a 2% line on the $7.4 million on a 15-year AM if the city were to take it on.
575.
575.
I stated that's the last works, that that's the last works.
310, if we limit the 310, that'd be a $265,000.
Exactly, and in seven years, the hope is, is that they're totally weaned off the city. If you don't do that, you're guaranteed to repay about $9 million.
And Jimmy, what I have to do is often negotiate, I mean, I can't pay $300,000 in principal every year. I have to pay, I have to pay some interest, maybe $450,000, you know, $200,000 in principal and whatever.
Well, my next question was, how realistic is it that the Airport Authority can, 310,000 appropriation, would you be able to make a payment?
I think, I mean, we've spent some time, I've gotta sell some stuff, you know, we've got some stuff to sell. I gotta get some reimbursement, something to pay any, but I, we've looked at it pretty closely over the last three months.
Is 310 the number, or is it 320?
You know, obviously, I'd like to have more as best.
I know, we wanna give you as little as possible.
What's the realistic number?
I'd say 3, I like that 310, because the rates have moved against you.
Their rates have cost us $10,000 since we've been discussing.
Probably $25,000. And I also like have a, would really help have a seven-year guarantee from the city, as opposed to a one-year, $3 million. That really makes the deal better for the banks and give us that right.
So is it 310 or is it 320 that we're?
For seven years.
Seven, 320 is what I was hearing.
Say 310 for seven years, still say it's 255 a year, so about a year and a half over seven years.
All right, any other discussion? Let's move to the proposed ordinance for moratorium. John, Jonathan, are you gonna make this presentation? Jonathan, are you? Or is there a, Mayor, are you?
We did the presentation already.
Okay, well, I didn't know if anybody wanted to give any highlights or anything such as that. Counsel, I was, if he's not, you can, just give a quick, quick overview if you like.
Sure, the moratorium will apply to subdivisions, including minor subdivisions and multiple occupancy project reviews throughout the city's planning jurisdiction. There are some exemptions, there's one exception, and that's a leave that, which is just a common law. The effective period of the moratorium is six months, unless the council decides differently. And this is all being proposed in an effort to evaluate public utility availability, address traffic issues, review and amend the city's drainage regulations, review requirements to protect sensitive environmental areas, excuse me, it's review the city's drainage regulations, not and amend. I apologize, that was taken out. Review requirements to protect sensitive environmental areas, review existing subdivision regulations, like the storm wardens, access management, corridor doors and other traffic-related things. That's just a general rundown, that's pretty much the nuts and bolts of the moratorium ordinance proposed. You have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Boone?
My question, and I already know the answer, but I told, the only question I've been asked a billion times is they feel that it's gonna affect the home building process, which I told them it's not. That is true, is that correct?
That's true.
Building permits will be supplied as, as norm.
Yes, if you have a legal log of record, you're allowed to pull a building permit.
Just wanna make sure. Everybody was asking.
Okay. Jack? Yeah, Jack? And this does not apply to commercial development, is that right?
The way the multiple occupancy project regulations read, multi-occupancy projects approval requires for any project that includes three or more units, regardless of the type of use. If it's a habitable unit, if there are gonna be people in the unit, that's kinda, that's the way that.
So mixed use would be impacted?
Mixed use would be impacted if anything, three or more units, whether it's commercial, residential.
Okay, but we could change that, right?
Yes, we can change it. But that's why we're having this discussion. Do you have an idea? Yes, sir. Robert?
Yeah, I've had several people contacting email, you know, asking about the minor subdivision being excluded. Talked to a few staff and just didn't know what, what the, what the intent of the moratorium is. I know we're trying to catch our breath and review the ordinances and regulations and the storm water and everything else. I mean, moratorium need to last three years to get a handle on all that. So what is the intent of, what are we trying to achieve in this timeframe, I guess is mine.
Right, so minor on that, Jonathan, is a minor, I think it still doesn't matter if it's a minor. If the minor is just two lots, it's allowed. If it's three or more, it would be precluded, is that right?
Minor subdivision is a two-lot subdivision.
Two-lot, so it's excluded.
Except for, four lots. So if you go over four lots, you're sure there's major subdivision requirements, which are more in-depth than what we require for minor subdivision process.
But if it was a minor subdivision that was building four, four lots, then that would be considered under this moratorium?
That would be affected by.
A minor subdivision at three lots would not?
No, it would. If you just, if you wanna divide one lot into two lots, it's affected by this moratorium.
If you were to exclude minor subdivision.
In fact, your minor subdivision is easy to review, but I will say, we have had a lot of inquiries like in the older parts of town, where we're experiencing a lot of drainage problems. So those minor subdivisions out over the years, you know, you know, or over the year, they could amount to quite a few. We have people with legal lots of record that have ranch-style houses built on those lots, and they're building, you know, three houses on what contained one house with a large yard. That's contributing to the negative drainage effects in the city right now. So these minor subdivisions, people have plenty of lots large enough to supervise the fruit and nut area, and they wanna tear down older homes and put in new structures, and they tend to maximize their allowable building footprints and impervious areas. So it does affect the city's stormwater infrastructure and things like that. So I can't say that it's not a big deal.
Mr. Boone?
You said that to, I'm gonna call it replat, a home lot into two lots is prohibited under the moratorium.
A replat is when you move a common lot line. So if someone had a 20-acre parcel, and they wanted to give their neighbor 10 acres and move that line over, and it's all got furnished on a public page, ready for the subdivision regulations, that wouldn't be a problem. That's something we can do administratively. I just sign off on it administratively, it doesn't have to go to the planning commission.
Okay. I just, I wanna throw out just for discussion, if, you know, if we're all comfortable with three or more lots. I, I just, I wanna know, is that, is that the intent? And just, just for the sake of discussion, throw out a different number. I mean, like five, I mean, or 10.
Well, can I ask?
Absolutely.
Um, you know, I think, Robert, you asked the question, you know, what's, what's the purpose behind this? And anybody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's multiple purposes to this, one of which is to give the planning department time to catch their breath and revisit and revise some of their subdivision regulations and get it to a point where we think this is the way we want it to be. The other is to examine infrastructure issues, like our utility, our utilities sewage being one of the main ones right now. And so if, if one of our purposes is to give you guys some breathing room, one of my questions would be on, when discussing these, how many lots? How much, how much does that put on you guys if we were allowing?
Five versus ten.
Mine was three or less.
I would just come up with a arbitrary number, man, we need to tie something in the subdivision regulations.
Well, if we allow minor subdivisions to be excluded.
Right, if you said that, you know, that's four lots or less, and, you know, that, if that's the way the council wants to do it, that's fine with us. I mean, that's not, minor subdivisions are not a huge burden, but if we really want to take inventory of what is wrong with the city, we, you know, we don't have much staff at this time. I know it's coming, but, you know, we definitely, it'll take time, even in minor subdivision. And also, not only does it take time to review those applications, we also have to think how they might affect the infrastructure in town.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Captain?
The other question is, that I've been asked, is the six-month, is that a reasonable number to, you think, to get what you need? You, your part done, not necessarily, I think it's a reasonable number to get a study done, so.
I think it is, I mean, I, it will be difficult to, if we're gonna be as ambitious as I've been told we're gonna be, it'll be fairly difficult to get all that done in six months. I think it can be done if we have the right folks.
Robert, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, the, the utility study, do we have an engineer?
I don't have one there. It was, it's not only engineers, right?
As far as the storm water runoff, you know, do we have a plan? I guess, I guess my, and I said this in the last meeting, I don't wanna call this moratorium and go into it and not be prepared in having the individuals lined up to hit the ground running. Once we do it, we're not spending holiday January figuring out who's gonna do what. And we're, you know, a third of the way through the moratorium before we start addressing the issues we're trying to address.
You know, the last time we did this, we did some extensive work regarding the city's traffic issues and subdivision regulations. It took a total of nine months to get all of that done, but we did a lot of work. And we updated, we had a drainage, a drainage study done throughout the city. Like I said, I think I mentioned that last time, which could help as far as any additional drainage studies that we may have done in future. But we had a major traffic study done at the time. We did, we made a, pretty much a rewrite of our subdivision regulations. And we probably could have done that, like I said, if we had, we had no help back then too. We had an engineering company that we hired to help us. But I think we can do it. You know, if we get, if we don't have to worry about, you know, 17 to 20 applications coming in, like we have this past month, you know, I think we can get it done. If you say get it done, I'll make sure it gets done, or somebody, you know, I know will get it done.
Can you get it done in three months? Jonathan, I wanna go back, go back to my question.
I think six months is ambitious, but I believe we can get many things done, or trying to accomplish. And if, if things are ongoing and the six months are up, we can continue working on it.
Right, and that's kinda my point, what is our, what is our intent? What are we trying to get accomplished in that, in that timeframe? You know, we're not, we're not gonna get all the sewer, whatever, if we come across issues, they're not gonna be resolved, and we're gonna, you know, in the six months, we're ready to handle explosive proof.
I believe we need to establish better procedures in our review process, and just in our ordinances in general, as far as planning goes, and maybe some other areas. I know the subdivision regulations need major attention. The drainage regulations in the sub-rates need to be updated. I have a lot of engineers telling me, you know, some of the flaws that they see in those regulations. They're still good regulations, but we need to tweak them. Also, we have overlapping regulations that really don't make sense. We've got the multi-occupancy project review process, and then a site plan review process and zoning. So, you know, two processes, one in the subdivision rates and one in the zoning. At times, you know, it doesn't really make sense to do both of those reviews, because, you know, you just have overlapping applications. And if we haven't submitted two applications, it really doesn't make sense to just submit one. But, you know, that, that's a small example. We also have issues with our tree ordinance contradicting or overlapping and encroaching into provisions that are in our zoning ordinance. You know, when we say a setback is a setback, and then the tree ordinance says you're supposed to setback 30 feet more, it just, that's difficult for a developer to understand. We just really need to streamline our regs. I mean, our regs need to overhaul. We have a lot of regulations, more than most, especially in all accounting, sure.
Hold on, hold on, Jim, Robert had his hand up. Thank you.
We have better regulations, they can be simplified.
Yeah, you know, and you mentioned that some of the engineers having some input. I'd love to see, you know, local engineers and developers that have worked in other areas in the region that, you know, can help with the streamlined process, not to make it easier to develop, but to make it less burdensome on the review process for, for y'all.
For Stan and Apple.
Right.
That's the way it should be. You know, I agree totally.
And one other point, it says in the exclusion, it says application, you know, what is a, what is a complete application? So if somebody submitted something last week, and they haven't gotten all the comments, you know, worked out, I mean, is that still, if you submitted something intentionally with a complete set, you know, what's the, where's, where's the fine line of what is a?
If they give us a complete set, I mean, and I'm gonna go down, I go through the subdivision. subdivisions, every single drawing, state, whatever, that may be associated with that development, it's not theirs. It'll be given back to the hour at this time. And that's, we've been doing that since, basically, the new administration took office. You know, there are inconsideration in the past, and that's, that's just how it was done, and that's how we were directed to, to move forward. But at this time, we will not accept an incomplete application. Now, if there's a typo on the plat, I'm, I wouldn't consider that an incomplete application. But if you have a major aspect of the development missing, such as a traffic study or a flood line, I would, I would send that back.
Jim?
Robert's first one is to answer exactly what I was about to ask.
Okay. Mayor, you have any questions?
We have been directed, by the way, you know, we've been directed to send any incomplete applications back. It was good to get that direction right, because in the past it was.
I don't, yeah, I agree with that totally. But, but I don't, I agree, I, I just don't want people being rejected because there may be a question that comes out of a, say, a planning commission meeting. I mean, that, that, that doesn't, shouldn't kick an application out.
No, if they have all their books on the road, and they come in with a complete application, and they meet the regulations that we have on the books, then obviously why anyone has a problem? Maybe, then everyone's panicked. So we've been getting applications that shouldn't have been filled. Now, a lot of them have been kicked back. I, I, in my 11 years, close to 11 years in there, I haven't kicked back this many applications ever. So there only been a couple since, you know, until recently. And the couple were just awful. Anyway, I've got an incomplete application someone submitted yesterday because they would have heard about the possibility of a moratorium. Unfortunately, it's incomplete for them, but it's gonna go back.
All right. Kevin?
Concerning these questions, I've been getting some phone calls concerning the timetable to which you're kicking these back and having time to answer these questions are non-existent. In other words, you've had this planned for two months. All the questions get answered. On the ninth hour, there's about five more questions. We're gonna kick it out because you haven't answered these, but they never had them to answer.
We had, we had, we get plans six weeks in advance, lately, which is not, and it has been, this is an operating procedure. Over the past three months, we've engaged a third-party review, a third-party engineer to review the plans, because a civil engineer hasn't been reviewing plans from City of Fair. We also don't have regulations in place to require an additional set of plans for that engineer to review, so we have to give him our entire set of plans. So that leaves me without that set of plans for however long it takes him to review that. So it kind of takes the, my time away. And number one, and also, being on the phone, you know, six, seven hours a day like I am, very hard for me to step away and get, and dig into these projects, especially when I only have a day to look at them in between when I have to send them back off to the engineer to review a second time.
I guess what I'm kind of getting at is not so much as during that process, but it's more of the question, if the questions that you send are sent out, third review questions are sent out, they're all answered, and then just before due date, we've got seven more questions, and so we kick it back, and we don't have those answers, and they can't get it to you.
Well, that hasn't happened very often. It's happened a couple of times, and I know the projects you're speaking of, and I know the engineering firm that's been dealing with these, these cases. And that's something we've had to do. I'm not gonna let something fly just because I see it late, you know, I mean, I ain't that horn, but, you know, and especially just these blatant mistakes. I mean, yes, it should have been caught earlier in the process, I agree, but we're talking about, you know, talking about errors on plats that are major, and I don't understand how they, they can be made.
That's not true.
You know?
Okay.
And we're not talking about anything that can't address the fix, you know, but.
No, I understand that, but once it's kicked back, and it's not, and the moratorium goes into effect, it's, that's out for six, forever, for the six months?
No, no, I mean, this, this stuff that we're working on right now, and we've had issues with, I mean, they're not kicked out, we're just waiting on additional information, and that, that's not, I wouldn't.
So the moratorium is not gonna affect those particular projects?
No.
Okay.
That's my fault.
No problem.
I only have a week and a half.
Right.
Especially during the holidays, when I've got everybody taken off, dude, you know, it's just been a difficult, a difficult time.
You know, and it is funny, it's a comment, but all the plans I ever worked on, I never found a perfect set of plans.
No.
Ever.
You will never find.
Yeah, you just, that's part of the deal, of, you know, and I understand your issues when you go through it, it is difficult.
Yeah, I, you know, I read the Press-List article that, you know, mentioned the quality of development that Fair has expects. We want to review those plans to the best of our ability to make sure we get the quality.
Right.
And if I see something, I'm gonna make sure it's a great, you know, it's late in the game.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions? Any discussion?
Just one more quick, and I think this might be a, something that's already been discussed, but if, if we put the six months on it, and then determine at some point during the six months that we're ready to go back into business, we can, we can.
Absolutely.
We can.
The moratorium can be terminated at any day.
You can stop it or add to it if you want. If you want.
So, counsel, so when we, when we get in the council meeting, because it is, it is on the agenda, it is item five.
Do to some of the things Jonathan mentioned about the, the conflicts between site plan and multi-occupancy review and all that, for transparency's sake, and I want to make sure that, that you understand what we've got. I've got a specific project across the street. They've started demo, they turned in plans, we have fire reviewed it, we have electrical reviewed it. We found out this week that they are gonna have to go to the multi-occupant review, and they are not gonna have time, they have already started the project. They already went through site plan approval, and they changed the layout to a different layout. We found that out this week, and I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. I don't want you thinking I'm trying to sneak or asking to sneak something in the back door. This has been sitting in the building department for three weeks, and it's gone through electrical and fire. I'm the last one to look at it. When I sat down with it, I talked to Jonathan about it, and that will be a significant issue.
That's site plan review, right? Application's been accepted?
They went through site plan review for a different layout.
For a different layout. Now they're gonna go for a multi-occupant review, and I have not informed, they don't even know this.
Does that review include a new application?
This would, it would require them.
It would require an application, and they have not been informed that they would have to apply. They've already started demo on the project. So I want to make you aware of that. If this goes in and that's shut down, you need to be aware that that is the case. For that one specific project. We don't have any others, Jonathan, that I'm aware of, where we've got any kind of issue.
Yeah, that, that project, it got caught, caught in a weird position.
It did.
And they went through site plan review, which, of course, they're coming back with a total commercial project, which, the project they're proposing doesn't trigger the site plan review process through the planning commission in City Council, but it does trigger the multiple occupancy project review process, because they're building more than three units.
Right. Sounds like we need to review the regulations.
Well, we plan on it. Yes, it's not, I mean, it, it isn't funny, it, it's gonna be an issue for the developer of the site.
I think we gotta be careful with the city opening ourselves up to.
Damn, we need to get this moratorium started.
What's that?
I said, that's, that's a kicker, that, we do need to get this moratorium started, but dang, he's already started work.
How many, how many, how many units are gonna be occupied?
That's a good question. I've received a building plan for three shells, and they're going to build single-story commercial units in those, in those shells, but they haven't submitted the floor plan to me. We know it's more than three, because I've got three buildings. I know it's three or more. But, like I said, it, it was originally presented after he went through site plan, submitted to the building department, and we're good. So we've been through, through two of our three steps of review when we sat down, now that it's gonna be more than three units, it's gotta go through this review as well legally. He's gotta go through that, and he has not been informed of that. So it's gonna shut down everything he's got going for six months, if that happens on this project. And he was not informed, and I, and I'll take, I'll take the responsibility for it. I just didn't get a chance to get to it until this week.
Marcus Shazera. Yeah, carve out for that, I sound like I don't know about making exceptions. Oh, there's Todd.
The applicant will go through the site plan review process, because she, there's no fee paid to the city for review. We do have free review, which that means we'll tap to our fee structures, doesn't need to be looked at.
Absolutely.
So they go, and they just draft up a plot plan essentially, and say, all right, this area's gonna be impervious, but not given this or that. So it's just easier, they'll get an idea, okay, if the council approves the site plan, they'll come back for multi-occupancy project review at times. So I, I assume that's what was going to happen. And I guess the applicant, this particular applicant, didn't realize that we had that process, so.
You know, what I understood is that if a project was already in the pipeline, that it was gonna be exempt, so the question is, to me, is this project already in the pipeline?
Is it considered in the pipeline because they submitted a month ago for building side? That's the question.
Yeah. The problem is, if you get somebody else, if you get others that change their mind and say, wait a minute, we've already been approved, the application's been accepted, now we want to add some residential units.
I just want to make you aware, because Mayor Wilson and you will all receive phone calls if this goes through.
But they had started.
You will definitely receive phone calls, you need to be aware of it.
This was started the work, being what we told.
If the project that's in the pipeline already is being significantly changed, so it's not the same project, then the question is, is the project now being proposed in the pipeline? If it's a different project, I would say it's not, but that gets real technical and specific, which you guys have that expertise more than I do.
We might be, should provide us with a legal recognition.
Yeah, to me, like, if it requires a new application, it's changed so significantly that it would be, that it would be excluded.
We would have to sit down and go over the specific technical differences.
It does need to be revisited.
Projects is outside, I know, I know what you're talking about. I don't remember exactly how it played out, but I thought a single horseshoe-shaped building with a courtyard, and therefore being one building, one unit.
That's correct.
They say it wasn't gonna be a building, and now it's a shell. So I thought, I think it, that, that's probably why I never even mentioned it in the first place.
And it changed from a single horseshoe-shaped building with a shell to three separate structures on the same lot.
So it did change?
It did change.
Okay. And I, I thought I might have, you know.
It did.
I thought I might not have informed them properly, but I, I remember seeing a horseshoe-shaped building, single building.
That's correct.
No units or tenants identified. So I think that's why I might have assumed.
Were his plans complete that he submitted to you, Eric?
No, he has sent me only for a building shell. I have no interior build-out, no finishes, I have no idea how many commercial units are going in these three buildings. It is three building shells. I don't know if the applicant knows how many commercial tenants he's gonna have. It's gonna be dependent on how he sells his space. He may have one per building, he may have three per, per building. I don't know if he even knows that answer. I just, I want to make you.
Sounds like we're trying to change our moratorium to fit that, and I don't know what that.
That's what I said.
Kind of sounds like we're trying to fit our moratorium to that, and I, I don't know that that's why, so.
I think you have to go ahead with what you propose, that if you decide to do it, and not let this one project influence how the moratorium is finalized and presented.
I just, counsel, I mean, and I, I'm gonna honor really what y'all think on this. I, I just still feel like that three is so restrictive, that I just don't know that that's the, the number. And I, and I hear you, Jonathan, I hear you saying that you need some line of demarcation, and that is that, you know, minor subdivision. But I do know that City Council would have the authority to write in this ordinance any way we want to write it in there, and say, if we want it to be multi-occupancy defined as five or more, then it's defined as five or more. If it's, say, we'd be say 10, hey, well, that's the number, it's 10. That's, that's my only hesitation. It's, anyway, but if y'all, if y'all want, if you guys decide that, that the way it's written, you want it to go the way, I, I am going to vote along with you, but I just want to think about that some more.
I think it needs to exclude minor subdivisions myself.
And that is, but that is.
Three, four or four.
Four or less, so, so anyway, so.
I would say that for Fair.
So that's greater than four would be excluded. Is it greater than four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll go along with that, if that's what you're thinking.
I'm okay with that.
I'll be here with that.
So where would that be exactly? I have to, see, now let me also, let me also say that this ordinance was advertised, we have to be very careful, you can't make a substantial change of it. What's that?
It wasn't put in the paper.
Oh, this is not the kind that has to be put in the paper, so we could materially change it more than, yeah. We can, because it wasn't advertised in the paper. Okay.
I think, I don't think that would be a material change if you increase the amount of exclusion. But if you decrease the amount of exclusion, I don't think it would be a problem. And that's not a substantial change.
Right. Okay.
Basically, go under section two, click D, applications for minor subdivisions.
Two, D. Mm-hmm, yeah, right there.
It's on D, because there is no D on the other page.
Okay. So two D would be an exemption. Do I hear any body?
Probably put it under section three, where it says subdivisions.
Well, you could, that's another question, under section three, is, would you call B, would you call it three B, would it be a categorical, categorical exemption, Jonathan? As a minor subdivision, as opposed to two? Clark makes a good point.
Yes.
That's where I would concern that.
Any, any strong feelings one way or the other on that, counsel? Does anybody else have any further discussion or question or comments on this? Do we feel like we've got a form of something that we can go into a council meeting and make a decision on?
Yes.
Robert? Okay. All right. Thank you, John.
Well, I do want to reiterate, make sure, you know, when you say a completed or an application, that we're not putting, you know, somebody that, that has one little thing that's left off council comments, and it goes back, you know, it's not, hasn't met everything 100%.
No, we're not, that's not.
Okay.
We're talking about material portions of application.
Right.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Okay, discussion, now this, this item three is actually two different items. We're not looking for a full-time in-house attorney, it's also an engineer. Anyway, this would be a discussion of a full-time in-house city attorney and discussion of a full-time in-house civil engineer. Mayor Wilson, do you want to lead that discussion?
Yes. Let me, let me. I basically have the amount that we spend for HR, gas, TUT, and planning, and it averages $136,752 a year. And we, we pay benefits on that too. And we can get a full-time in-house attorney for, I mean, we'd have to get the range, but we can definitely save probably about $30,000 at least. And the dollars, you know, that, that would be here full-time, first and foremost, but the significant advantage to the city is that we would be the only client and the sole concern. So, I think we've grown enough with what we've been spending to have a full-time in-house attorney to handle all of our legal needs. And then, of course, if we do need an outside firm, right now, we have Matt's firm.
Okay. Council, questions, discussion?
I missed one, or you said HR, planning, zoning, TUC, or what's the?
Gas.
Oh, gas, why am I...
Planning. Well, it's, uh, for the gas department.
Gas, okay.
Uh, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, as the attorney sitting on the council, I mean, I, one of the reasons that we, that you hire out is that you can seek expertise in the exact area in which you need it. And by hiring an in-house person, the, the odds of that person at that salary, you're talking about having the extensive experience and expertise that we're able to go out and hire for each specific need, I think is unlikely.
I have somebody that, you know, y'all can meet, that is, you know, done all of that and has been working in those areas already, 'cause that's what he's done. And I, I know I have a lot of questions that I, I don't really, you know, ask a lot right now, but to be able to have an attorney available all the time would be very good, especially with what we're doing right now. We're gonna be, I mean, we really are concerned about the way we're, we're growing. We have a lot of suits that we go to the municipal court with all the time. I don't know how many you mentioned last time, but I believe those need more time. And we need to spend more time checking off everything and making sure these go through correctly. This is, I've had a conversation with Tutt, and he agrees that we have grown enough to probably have a need, have a need for a full-time in-house attorney. A lot of cities this size have that. And I would love to be able to get to a point where that's the only thing we ever pay, and would be great.
Well, I agree that it was a reasonable issue to look at and examine from the standpoint of expense. I do think it's reasonable to look at, I think the mayor's right to look at it, fresh eyes on how we do things, but I don't know, well, I shouldn't be the one to say, it's my job to be talking about it.
So, was that, would that, are you saying that if we had an in-house attorney, that we would not have a city attorney? Would that eliminate?
That would be, that's the city attorney, it's full-time.
That would be the city attorney, so full-time in-house city attorney, as opposed to it being on retainer.
Right, well, I mean, it's for, for different attorneys, in addition to an outside firm.
But that would, that person would be a city employee?
Yes. The only, like I said, the only and sole concern is the city, a fair hope. All the time is spent on the city, and there's no other distractions, it's just the city.
Anybody else, questions or comments?
No, I gotta, I gotta.
Go ahead, Jay.
I mean, I'm...
He had raised his hand.
I did not raise my hand. Maybe, maybe forget what I was gonna say.
That's why we write it down over here, I don't know what you do, we write it down.
I, I, I mean, I think I said it, I mean, I, I would just be concerned that, and Mayor, I don't know who you're, who you're talking about, but, I mean, every, you know, firms tend to specialize, and lawyers tend to specialize. I mean, Tutt handles a lot of our, of our municipal issues, I think. Mr. Myrick handles a lot of our, our HR issues, and those are two seasoned, experienced attorneys that, that have been through this, multiple issues on these particular focuses of practice, that to have somebody, and, and I'm not, I'm not sneezing at the salary that would be paid this person, but to, to be able to pay somebody that amount, I don't know what their level of expertise would be in every one of those issues, and that, that would be my concern, that we'd be...
I think we're gonna need a lot more time in the planning area. And this person absolutely knows planning, HR, and municipal all. So, I do think it's a perfect scenario, if I didn't, I wouldn't bring it up if I didn't, you know, hadn't found somebody that I thought would be great.
So, we're not gonna go through an interview process, you have them already selected?
We can, absolutely, and this has not been advertised, but we can absolutely do that, so.
I would certainly hope that we would follow the law and advertise and properly hire someone.
Like Gail?
Gail would move to a position, you wanna... Jimmy, do you wanna go there, Mayor? I mean, if you wanna go there, we can go there. We can go there, I mean, I, I see email addresses for people that I don't even know if they work for the city. Have you seen any computers anywhere of anybody? Jimmy, you got anything?
My question, I'm sorry.
Thank you, John.
Go ahead, Kelly.
You bet. My question is, as far as this goes, is this gonna be done under the city council appointing the city attorney? Or doing all, same as we're doing now?
For, you know, interviews, and y'all could, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just looking at this strictly as, I, I feel like we need more help in both planning and, you know, and looking at that, and that we're already spending almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year on it, just with needing, on a, as a, as need basis. You know, that's why I'm saying, I think this would not only save us a lot of money, but it does give us someone that this is their only concern, it's the city of Fairhope.
I just, I don't, I, I kinda tend to agree with Jay, that I think that it's, you're gonna have to have... This, this person that you have in mind may have a lot of experience in all these different aspects, but, you know, at a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year, that's really not spending a lot for what we get. And if we save twenty thousand dollars on the salary, by the time you add benefits, you're down to saving ten thousand. And, pardon?
The figures that I'm giving you, I mean, you can add the benefits, we do have benefits.
Yeah, they have to have benefits, and then, but then I think that it's kinda like the council that helps us with litigation now. We're not just gonna always get what the insurance pays us. For example, we have a, an executive session tonight with attorneys, and they charge for that, and rightfully so. And so, you always have some legal expenses over and above that, which is, say, for instance, covered in litigation by the insurance. So, I think that even if you get a crackerjack attorney that can do all these things, there's gonna be times during the year, and whether that's ten thousand dollars more, or twenty thousand, or thirty thousand dollars a year, there are gonna be times that we have to go outside of that in-house attorney.
I'm not saying you'd have to go, you'd have to, you still have to go outside.
Then it's, then it's a wash, and then you've lost the expertise of someone that has decades with the city. You have Paul Myrick, our HR attorney, who has, has a multitude of years of experience with the city. And planning and zoning, we, we obviously have a void there now. But I still think you're gonna have costs that are outside of the in-house attorney. I don't think they're unavoidable.
I didn't say we wouldn't have cost, I said that with what we're paying now, as an in, what I think an in-house city attorney would handle, which is the HR predominantly, TUT, and planning. Planning's gonna increase, definitely. I'm saying that as an in-house attorney, full-time, we would save a minimum of thirty thousand dollars a year. I, I'm not saying that, you know, we, we have a firm for bigger cases, and if we need expertise, we have that in place right now, and that will not affect this. I'm only saying the cost per year of what we're doing right now. And this is, like I said, very, very part-time. We could have, saving thirty thousand dollars a year, minimum, I mean, that's, we haven't even gotten to that part, a full-time in-house attorney that does not have any other interest except the city of Fairhope.
Jay, do you have another question?
Just a couple. First, I wanna make sure that everyone understands, I'm not advocating less lawyers, just so I don't get flogged at the next secret meeting of the, of the attorneys. But I, I wanna make sure I'm understanding you right. This, so, if we're spending a hundred and thirty-six thousand on outside council right now, on these, on the different areas that you're talking about, and that, and we're talking about hiring somebody, or the idea of potentially hire somebody at a hundred or a hundred and six, whatever it is, so we're, I, I think you said it, we're saving a minimum of thirty, but I think it, it would be a maximum of thirty, assuming they don't have to call any outside council.
Well, we're, what I said is, planning, we need, we're gonna increase that person. We are gonna need somebody around that's gonna be advising a lot more with planning.
And I, and I get what you, I, I think the ultimate point is that someone that you feel like you can call anytime you need them. I, I get that point, but my position, I think, is still that I worry about losing expertise to get convenience. And I think that's probably the trade-off.
It's, it's expertise and knowing that we have access all the time.
Well, I am always available. I'm not, I'm not an expert in areas that you're talking about.
Like I said, I mean, we, we can put out, you know, that as a, as a hire, but I do have someone that does, has expertise in these areas, and we can look for more as well.
Okay.
You're always available for council, too?
Always.
I just wanna make sure.
Always.
You always answer my phone calls.
That's right.
Well, I don't know about y'all, as, as council president, it's, it's fairly often that I have to call council for a quick question or an opinion, a lot of times when I call Lisa. But many times I call council, and I don't ever have any problem reaching them or having a meeting with them. I get a call back, yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know. Tutt, you, I mean, you called me back, it seems like within, you know, minutes if I call you.
I'm not complaining about that, I'm saying I, I want to do more, and I don't wanna spend. I definitely would, would like to have a lot more, you know, ask more questions, and, but also, I, I want to make sure that I'm using time efficiently, and I don't wanna spend more money.
One thing I would say is that when you have the services like you have from our firm, we cover our own legal assistance and our own overhead research charges, all that. And we, that's part of the service, whereas in-house council, I think, would have to have a, a legal assistant and an office and IT setup and a lot of things that we, we have and supply as part of what we, we do. And I don't know if that's over and above the one oh six, I think it would be.
I don't think it would be much, we already have IT, and like I said, if, we're talking about a lot more hours that we, that would be available to help me and the other things that we need to do. This was not something I wanted to put on the agenda for vote, I mean, you can if you want to, but I mean, this is, if they're on your radar, that I think it would be a smart decision.
Any feedback, council, any direction?
I can see some benefit to having somebody on-site that you can just reach out and ask anytime. My biggest question, and I'm just reiterating what Jay said a couple times, was if there's somebody that could be in that price point, an HR expert and a planning and zoning expert. And then not have, what I wouldn't wanna see happen if we did go that route, is to hire somebody that find out that they really have to go back out to our current HR firm and, and talk to them, and that we don't really wind up saving that kind of money. But I do see the benefit of having somebody at that point.
There, there's another aspect as well, our city attorney is our city prosecutor. They attend municipal court, they attend council meetings. They, as it's written now, the city attorney is hired by the council and works with and for the council, as well as the mayor and for the city. So, this person would have to wear that hat as well.
That's definitely, I mean, what it would be, that person would do that.
Anything else, anybody, give me some direction, or if not, we'll just, without discussion, we'll move on? Anything else on it?
Yeah, I think, just continue to discuss it, you know, the, get the personnel boards taking, you know, we, and these positions, I know budget-wise, we're saying we're gonna save money, but I just wanna see it translated in how, how it trickles down into...
Okay. All right, civil engineer, Mayor, that's you also.
And...
Same reason, same thing.
Same thing, we spend over eight hundred thousand dollars a year on civil engineering. I'd say we need at least one civil engineer on staff. And we have to hire outside, every time we need something approved. So, y'all can make that decision.
I'll go first. I'm not adverse to this position, and I think that we could, I think we have grown to a capacity where we might need an in-house engineer. I do think that we are still going to have tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of, for the same reason, I'm a little bit concerned about the attorney. You also have, engineers have different areas of expertise, and I know you're saying civil engineer, but even within civil engineers, there's different areas of expertise, whether it be water management, or whether it be sewage treatment systems, or whether it be structural engineers, roads bridges, there's lots and lots of different aspects of civil engineering. So, I, I, you know, you have some numbers that I think Deborah had put together. If you look at general engineering, four-year totals were two hundred and thirteen thousand, four seventy-nine. That's, that's total, so roughly fifty-three, fifty-four thousand a year. Then you have bid and quoted items on projects, for instance, out of that eight hundred thousand, there's a million and twenty thousand to Volker's. And I would guess that, that there's a great deal of that was due to the sewage treatment plant. And anytime we have a project of ten or twelve million dollars, you're gonna have a year where you've got, you know, a million-plus dollars in engineering fees. I'm not exactly sure on the Thompson Engineering, where the Ford twenty-five all comes in. I know that about ninety thousand of that was the comprehensive plan. And those are things that your in-house civil engineer are just, they're just not gonna handle. Those are gonna have to be bid out.
It didn't include those.
Pardon?
It did not, those figures I gave you did not include the sewer, and we deducted that from this.
Two point six, two point, I'm looking at four-year totals of two point seven three million dollars, which is roughly seven hundred thousand a year for four years. So, it didn't include the sewers, it would actually be more if you included all the projects.
This dam here? Okay, I mean, the other dam, the standings. Okay.
Yeah, he's right there.
Oh, I, I'll just base this on what you gave me, do you know what, what that made? Do you have, I'm trying to look for it to see if I...
This was just the contracted amounts, what we pay engineers in contracts, that's what we pay. So, it was all inclusive.
This is all-inclusive, Deborah, every engineering cost?
Yes.
Okay, two point seven three million for four years, if you take out those two larger projects.
Actually, three, you got the sucker field involved in that also.
I mean, that's the thing is...
Ten sports?
If we don't have a civil engineer, we're gonna have to call for every single thing we need approval on. I try my hardest to get all the facts before these meetings, but I can assure you, I have a lot on my plate. I'm saying that we've had a civil engineer in the past. We do spend a lot of money on this, and I think it would be good for the city to have somebody that's always there, that can do the things that we need stamped. So, again, the budget is what I'm working on right now, and when I look at these figures, I'm identifying the things that I feel like are the biggest expenses. And, you know, if y'all don't wanna do that, that's fine, but believe me, it is a huge expense. And I know Jonathan needs help in planning, and we also need it in public works. You know, this person could do other things too, but just not having to contract out every single time we need an approval on something would more than pay for that salary.
Well, I, 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 I'm not, I'm not totally opposed to this idea at all, I think it's been discussed. I, I think it has some merit, but however, if you look at the, the bids and the, and the quoted projects, where out of the two point seven million is two point four million, out of the, just, let's just call it general engineering, which is what your in-house engineer is going to do, and there may be from time to time, they can do, you know, something that might have been bitted. There's, there's a chance that here and there, they can pick up some of that. But just the general engineering itself, for four years, the total's two hundred and thirteen thousand. So, once again, that's back to fifty-three thousand a year, which is far less than what the salary of an engineer is.
This is a contract, I'm not sure what we're paying the person that, in planning right now, I don't know.
I just have, not to exceed the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, that's running, that's running out pretty much at this point.
What was that, what was that, Jonathan, who was that?
Larry Smith of SC Civil Engineering, he's been reviewing our subdivision.
Yeah, he's, he's twenty-seven eighty-one on here, and that's one of the ones, I said, there are some things that you could put over from projects over to general engineering, that's three thousand dollars.
He just kinda had an emergency situation, so I had to get authorization to hire someone, and Larry was, in my opinion... And Larry was, in my opinion, the most reasonable. And I think he does a good job for us. But we, we do need an engineer. I mean, but I don't know how we accomplish getting it all the time, but we've got to have somebody accessible. Because like I mentioned earlier, it's very difficult. And it can be managed in different ways, but it's difficult for us to give our plans, you know, without us having regulations in place to, to have to require additional sets of plans to go to the engineer. We give him our...
Well, if, if you want that, then you need a civil engineer with, with expertise in planning. Because if you take the engineer that we have on retainer right now, and I see Jay, I see Trey Genright out there in the audience, uh, right now, um, you know, he has particular expertises. I'm not sure if, if planning is in that, but if you, if you, and he's got a whole team of engineers. So, he's on call, and I'm not sure if he covers that, but there's always a situation where you have to go out and get someone else. And...
Yeah, I didn't say we wouldn't have to get anybody else.
Okay.
Most cities have engineers. Civil engineers.
I'd like to offer more to this, but I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what a normal salary for an engineer is. I don't know what, what we would...
Right now, I just wanted it on the work session, so I'm putting it on radar.
Sure.
I, I, I mean, I do recognize that we have major growth issues. I mean, I think that's probably the biggest issue we've got right now. And having, and if, if it's cost-efficient to have a, an engineer on staff, I mean, I think, I don't think there's any doubt we need the help of engineers in doing, in dealing with what we're dealing with. It's just whether or not it's cost-efficient to have one on staff versus not. And I don't, I don't know that answer.
Well, that's why I was saying, the, the general engineering is 53,000 a year for the past four years average. And the other stuff was, was projects. And there may be a, you know, 5,000, 20, it's 820,000. What made, made up a larger number, put it over in general engineering. I think that we're going to have to have more engineering. And maybe it's that we're just not even having enough done as we need right now, as Jonathan alludes to, that if we had one, it would, it would be a lot more productive. It's a cost that we're not seeing because we haven't been utilizing what we need, maybe.
Right. And in order to manage our process efficiently and not have issues like Mr., Councilman Boone mentioned, where we catch up at the last minute, you know, it'd be great to have someone on staff that we had accessible to us all the time. You know, it's, it's, it's very common to have that, especially for a city our size at this point. We have grown to the point, in my opinion, where we do need a, a civil engineer on staff in the city.
Okay. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm interested in that possibility, but I, I'd need to know what the numbers were, just, just simply because I don't know, again, what engineers are paid and what, how that would correlate to what the city spends already. I know, Jack, you're saying that it's 213 on pro, on, on just general expenditures, but 2.4 million in projects. But I mean, we're, it seems like we always have projects in Fairhope and that, that's, that, that expense is...
Could always be there.
Will vary, but it's going to, it's going to, but it's going to be there in some, some way.
And you hope that your in-house can take some of that.
Well, that's, that's right.
That's the big question, is what percentage of that would they be able to...
Right.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm looking at this list, and I'm pretty familiar with these projects, and it's, and there's very few. For one, when you look at, well, you take Volker, Volker as a million dollars, or say, average app, dollar of average app for four years, you're not buying an engineer. You're getting an entire company. You may have, they may have, tell me, how many people work on a sewer plant?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, 20-plus.
20-plus. And, and some of these other large numbers are multitude, and it's their staff, as Tutt was referring to, and attorney, it's, it's the engineers. There may be senior level, principal level, junior level, and their support staff. Maybe there's draftsmen in there. Uh, there's lots of things that go into that. So, there are, a lot of these are fixed. I would, once again, I know I sound like the devil's advocate, because that's what we get paid to do, is to ask these questions. I, I'm not totally against it, but it's...
Yeah. And I, I apologize for not being as familiar with the engineering area as maybe I should be.
Yeah, I guess what I, I guess what I was trying to say, by saying that, was that, you know, an engineer, an in-house engineer is going to be so busy with what they have to do, that, that all of these quoted projects, we're going to have to still hire. So, it's not going to eliminate, you know, that.
But would, but would it, in general terms, obviously, things happen, but would it help eliminate the general engineering expenses?
Yes, but you're not going to get one with experience for 53,000 a year, not even salary. Uh, most college grads start off higher than that now.
But, but would it, but would it, but it would also allow us to have somebody full-time in the planning department also? So, it would, I mean...
And public works. I mean, they could use public works to even more.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here, which is probably not a smart thing for me to do.
I mean, we have roads and everything that we, we go through.
Those things would definitely be a benefit, you know, by, you know, say, our road paving project, you know, you could have somebody there for that. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's close. We're kind of going to be close on that, in my, in my opinion. Now, we just might, I don't want to paint ourselves in a corner and then realize that even for general engineering, we're having to go out and get expertise. Just for discussion. Not really opposed to it.
Kevin?
It's been my experience, engineers are some of the hard-headed individuals I've ever met. And the reason I bring this up is, we've made a point that they could help us on some of the projects. Well, if it's just, when you have a project, you have an engineer of record. And when he stamps those plans, those are his plans. If something goes wrong, they don't go to our engineer and say, well, you suggested that. They go to him. And when he starts making these recommendations that aren't suitable to the engineer of record, I think it could cause some pretty problems, pretty good problems. And in my discussions, I thought I knew something going on, discussing with these engineers. It didn't go very well.
Well, I, I get, I get that. Sorry.
Go ahead. We're, we're good. They're just not talking over each other.
Yeah. But, but I mean, I, and I get that. And that's, and again, since I don't know, I mean, I didn't know till right now that there is such thing as an engineer of record on projects. That's probably something I should...
Required by state law.
Um, I did know that right then.
Did you cover contracts?
Make sure you're right, though. I did know that.
You have to have engineer of record for anything over 20,000, which means every time we spend over 20,000, which is almost every time, we have to contract that out.
But again, we know what these general engineering expenses are, and we know that we want somebody more in the planning and zoning. I'm just, what I'm, what I'm thinking and saying here is that we, we all know that growth is our big, is a big problem and a big issue for us to address. And an engineer is, could help us with that.
Well, can a civil engineer help with planning process? Do you need a, do you need more of, of a planner? I mean, if that's it. And, and then do you, uh, and then is that something that you can, you know, you can contract out for that? I mean, is this going to be something you need, uh, once we get comp plans straightened out, subdivision rules and regulations ironed out? Is that something that you're going to rely less on? I don't know that either. It's just a lot to talk about.
Right. I would say the civil engineer comes in when it comes to infrastructure such as roads, utilities, and stormwater, and facilitation. But as far as planning goes, we look at the land. We look at land use. We look at, you know, the area and initial requirements, those zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations. Uh, there's a lot more that goes into planning. That's a profession all in itself. So, we need the engineer to focus primarily on the infrastructure needs of our, you know, the infrastructure review process, I guess, for our department. And, uh, you know, that's, that's the main issue we're having. We, we need someone to review stormwater. I mean, we, I trust our engineers around our community, but, you know, at times, we do find mistakes. And we need to make sure that everything's being done right. We have good, we have good regulations. We need to tweak them, but that's the biggest concern.
It definitely brings our liability. And I can assure you that most cities our size have a civil, at least one civil engineer wants to out.
That's good discussion. Anybody else have any final comments or questions on that? Okay. All right. Recommendation for Board of Adjustments. Kevin, is that you? Is that you, this agenda item? Is this Mayor?
Why don't you go ahead and just say it is you, and then it'll get passed.
I have no idea what you're talking about. It's not me. I do have opinions on.
This is just, I mean, I don't really care. I just know we have to have a person for, we need two alternates, which I'm waiting to hear back from one of the people. And this is someone who applied early on during the election. Uh, we have, so we have, um, one chair to fill, and then we need two alternates. The other person that I have on here...
Current, we have John Avon, Ray Clark, Edens Slavel, Troy Strong, Anil Vera, and then alternate, Richard Snyder, and a vacant alternate.
Actually, I think we have two vacant.
Actually, I think Ray is not, no longer on there.
Yeah, we have two vacant.
And we have two, because I think Dick slid up into that spot.
This, this person will do, I, I didn't make copies of this one, but this one would do, uh, one of the alternates. And when there, when another one of the Board of Educate, Board of Adjustments seats opens up, he could go into that, because he wanted to serve. Some of these people want to serve on planning council, that since we don't have an opening right now, this is a three-year term. And then I'm waiting to hear back from an architect. And I should know something by end of the year.
So, I'm sure, I'm, I'm clear here. There's one opening, one, only one opening, and then there's...
Two alternates.
Two openings for alternates.
Correct.
That would be for the opening two.
Actually, let me ask, Lisa, aren't all these terms expiring in this year?
Yes.
And, you know, technically, I guess, how long, with, this particular board should be two members for one year, two members for two years, and one member for three years. So, when we do this, we, we need to list these gentlemen as far as what the terms are going to have the next time under the bylaws of the city. Instead of all of them being rotated at one, at one time...
Exactly.
Which is where we are now. It's set up for, then the rotated alternating or staggering terms, or be reappointed. It's not so much as rotating off, but you could be, they could be reappointed, but the terms are for one year, for two members. Two other members will get two years, and one member gets three years.
Okay.
So, again, my point is, whenever we do these reappointments or add-ons, we set them up as far as the staggered terms, get back on the right track. That's my suggestion.
Well, counsel, what I would give you direction on is that, just simply that, not any direction on these people necessarily, but that Board of Adjustment, uh, appointments are made by the council. And I spoke to the mayor about this, and certainly welcome input on this. So, does anybody, I mean, we're just looking at these for the first time. Is there, first, I guess, is there some urgency? Do we have a meeting coming up in which we need to put people on?
The meeting was canceled, I think, this week.
Do, do we...
The next meeting is on the 17th.
Of January.
Of January.
But I mean, we have...
And the council meeting will be on the 9th.
Okay, so we get, so...
So, you have a council meeting prior to...
Well, we didn't have a quorum as well. It was canceled. That's why we need two alternates.
So, we do need to have, I mean, we do need to make this decision. This needs to be on the...
By the next meeting. I would say it needs to be on by the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Or, or do you have a normal standard fare of practice, just keep running like nothing's going wrong?
But I mean, we...
We need new people.
You got three openings, and you got two applications.
So, it seems...
The one for Christina came early on, and...
One.
And since I have a biologist on it...
Mayor, would you ask Mr. Kohler to just, just fill out the application, just tell him to turn in a formal application?
Yes.
Cool. So, um, you know, we can discuss that at, at the next meeting. It's always uncomfortable talking about, okay, we're going to pick this person. But, you know, one, with, with two applications, one would be, uh, fill the opening, and one would fill the alternate?
No, you can reappoint the opener.
Okay. Well, who, how many?
You still need an alternate.
You need, actually, you need two alternates.
You need two alternates.
You need two alternates, and then you can either reappoint, Anil Aver is appointed...
That's the one we're replacing.
Is expiring. And I contend we're not replacing. I contend we're going to reappoint him and go from there. But we do need two alternates. Just like you said, Mayor said, the, uh, meeting, last, the last meeting had to be canceled. And Jerry's not done it. Jerry, during the, you know, holiday season, people can't make it, can't be there. And they didn't have any alternates to fill the spots. They had to cancel meeting due to lack of quorum.
Was Anil willing to continue to serve?
Yes, he is.
So, do Anil, Christina, and Aver, then?
Well, Christina was what I proposed for the one that was, I do believe, especially with this board, we do need to alternate occasionally, because you do have to get fresh eyes. And there's been a new administration voted in, and I, I think the boards need to reflect what the vision is for the new administration. That's just what I believe. And there needs to be, you know, we have to give citizens opportunity. They want to serve. And it's a volunteer position, I think, that we need to give all citizens opportunity.
Are there terms listed by the people, like you mentioned?
No, you will designate those people to be whatever term. It's just the terms are set up. It's not like a place one, a place two. It's just that five members have alternating terms.
Is that established right now, or that, or just...
It's established right now. It's not being done.
This is what I had on file.
Right. Right now, they're all, and again, I don't know how far back...
Are there any others that are expired, in order, Michael? There are no others that are expired?
Yeah, they're all, they're all going to, the way I understand. They're all, they all have served a three-year term. They have to live in the city.
The only other member that I'm a little concerned about, we had Ray Clark resigning because he's the city's manager's district. Dick Snyder was, he came into his spot as a permanent member. I don't know that that was ever voted on officially to make Dick Snyder a permanent member of the board. So, it might be something we need to do. Also, I'm looking at Lisa about, I've been asking about alternates, at least, for a long time now.
Okay. Well, folks, we have come to the time of day where we have to adjourn and go to our council meeting. It's six o'clock. I know we're having fun, time flies.
Hey, were we going to do the, the, uh, the department heads give us one good thing tonight? Was that...
In that Christmas spirit.